I'd like to thank everyone for coming out this evening. We all understand the importance of family and promise to maintain an efficient and informative session. Tonight, as we open this forum, the Nutley Board of Education felt that it was important for the community to have an understanding of the challenges that developed over the last six years which brought us here tonight to discuss the potential renovations and construction projects at four of our district schools. The Nutley Board of Education has spent countless hours gathering information on the challenges which have arisen in the district, which include a significant surge in student enrollment, a need to expand our buildings while virtually being landlocked within the township, as well as interpreting financial impacts that would direct any future expansion within the district. With these challenges came opportunities, and the board wasted no time in capitalizing. Two years ago, with the help of the Board of Commissioners, we were able to successfully secure the bike shop, which is located adjacent to the middle school. The impact of acquiring this space truly provided a canvas we would need to address the mounting concerns throughout the district. During this time, we also revisited and updated our original Demographers' Report, which indicated a potential new increase of 500 additional students entering the district within the next five years. As many of us here are familiar, last year we had additional modular space at both Washington and Yanacaw to manage the recent overcrowding and space issues at both schools. The conceptual designs discussed this evening include the creation of additional space at four of our seven schools: Yanacaw, Washington, John Walker Middle School, and the Nutley High School. These are the schools that are either most impacted by overcrowding or will help to offset some of the overcrowding within the district. We have deliberated over the last few years balancing student needs with the financial impacts to our community and taxpayer. We, as a board, feel that a responsible build to these four schools will help the district for decades to come. What began as a project in an excess of $96 million was peeled back to prioritize what we believe to be the most responsible, cost-efficient, sustainable, and, most importantly, student-impactful. So we, as a community, can continue to build on the educational success of not only the last six years, but reinforce our educational infrastructure for the next 15 to 20 years. Tonight, you'll hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Julie Glazer, and her discussion will cover the space needs within our district, as well as what helps our students academically, socially, and emotionally. Next on the agenda, you'll hear from our architectural firm, the DeCara and Rubino. They will explain the conceptual draft drawings of the four schools discussed among this board. Then Ms. Karen Yaman's, our business administrator, will walk you through the potential tax impacts and costs associated with the conceptual designs. After the presentations, we've allotted time for our questions and answers, and hopefully it will be a robust discussion. It's important that questions and ideas are shared so that we, as a community, can work together to move forward. And now, at this time, I'd like to introduce our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Julie Glazer.
Thank you, Danny. I'm really proud and impressed how many staff and parents and community members have come out to all of the town hall meetings, and I'm thrilled that everybody has stayed so engaged in the process. To have this opportunity to talk to you about the potential but much-needed construction projects is really been our pleasure. The time is now for Nutley and the community to gather together and to discuss the best ways to move our district forward. I need your input. We need your input. You know this community best. Many of you have heard me say that the first thing that I noticed about the town of Nutley was the pride that the residents have for the town and for the history within it. Many of our families have been here for generations, and those of us who are newer love it just as much. As your educational leader, I'm asking you to help me understand your thoughts and views as well as our needs as a district. As you've heard me say, this includes all of our schools, not just the four sites with proposed construction. Everybody benefits from classrooms being freed up as our sixth graders move to the middle school, and everyone benefits from our true sixth-to-eighth-grade middle school model. In conjunction with the Demographers' Report detailing school overcrowding and an increase in the school-age population in Nutley, we have aging buildings, and, a very important fact, that our space usage is essentially shrinking due to an educational program requirement by the state, the county, and by high-quality education in general. The board and administration have worked closely with the architects to bring you some concepts for additions at Yanacaw, Washington, the middle school, and the high school. We believe that we're sharing what we have as the best solutions to address overcrowding, to enhance academic rigor, and to maintain the neighborhood culture and walking community that's contributed to the charm of this town, as well as to stable home values. To articulate the reason that we're all here, not just to discuss the projects, but as a Nutley school district, we are at educational capacity. This is not the fire code capacity, but the available space for the effective delivery of instruction. In August, I think everybody knows that I added sections in the last two available classrooms, including first grades and sixth grades at Washington and Radcliffe. By not adding to our buildings, we face several realities. We remain overcrowded and only worsen as the enrollment projections continue to grow. Our class size increases at each and every elementary school. The trailers at Yanacaw and Washington remain as permanent structures, and more trailers will need to be added over time to house additional students. Our projections are that that will need to happen as soon as 2021. Additionally, the district would face a moderate redistricting initiative involving Washington, Yanacaw, and Spring Garden Schools to be able to continue to accommodate all of our elementary school students. As a walking district, we had 131 requests for students not to attend their home school for a variety of reasons last year. I was forced to deny many of those requests, and unfortunately would have to do the same as well next year. This also impacts the number of students who are currently choosing to come from other schools, especially for siblings and our special education population. Currently, in Nutley, we have sections, meaning grade levels, closed at Yanacaw, Washington, and Lincoln School, forcing new registrants to attend a school other than their home or neighborhood school. This would also have to continue along with the increased class size. Trust me when I tell you, it's very difficult to tell a family who just excitedly bought a new home and it's happened more than once in the last three weeks that, "I'm sorry, your children can't walk to their neighborhood school. I'm sorry, I know you bought a house in Lincoln, but we don't have room for your students at Lincoln. We do have space for them at another school." And even though the other schools have been warm and welcoming to the new families and to the new students, then we have the reality of the schools where they're going having increased class size. It's also a struggle for parents to drive their children to two different schools, as we've had repeatedly during this school year, so we can accommodate children in a variety of grades. Even with providing before and after care, this remains a challenge for our families. People say to me all the time, "Does it really matter if there's 26, or 28, or 30 children in a classroom?" Absolutely, especially in our kindergarten through grade three. But beyond instruction, it really is about the space. Imagine 26 or 30 desks in a classroom. You lose all of the space, the rug space, for our newly-valued reading-and-writing workshop model. You lose the space for centers and for opportunities for students to move around the classroom. You lose the opportunity for the teacher not to be stuck at the front of the classroom, but to be a facilitator of education among the students. Overall, our academics will suffer. So let's move on to the proposed projects and talk a little bit about what's happening in each school. I am going to start with the middle school, because, as I said, that does affect all of our students here in Nutley. Our top priority is to provide the best education for all of our students. The move of our sixth graders out of the five elementary schools and into the middle school frees up three to four classrooms in each elementary school and does make the John Walker Middle School a true sixth-to-eight middle school model. This project includes the addition of 20 classrooms, a cafeteria and service kitchen, multipurpose room, toilet facilities, a secure entrance, and the reconfiguration of the office wing. There are no renovations to the current Board of Education offices, and they will remain in the basement of the middle school. The benefits of moving to a sixth-to-eight model have been widely discussed, not just this year, but for the past two years. As we've said, targeted instruction, which means our teachers specialize in a content area, does enhance the rigor of the instruction that's being delivered. Additionally, putting the sixth graders in a middle school gives them more independence. They really are ready, at a human growth and development level, to be with their middle school peers much more than their elementary peers. Our teaming and advisory program really helps us focus on individual student needs and allows us to further personalize and individualize instruction for all of our students. Pupils are also exposed to a variety of areas of specialization, and this happens much earlier than we can provide for that at the elementary school level. On an exploratory basis, students are able to develop interests that help feed into their high school programming, again, at a much earlier age. Additionally, our sixth graders have the opportunity to use specialized facilities like science labs, practical art shops, and makerspaces, and to participate in extracurriculars that they do not have access to in our current elementary structure. Again, I could keep going on and on about the benefits, but these are detailed in our frequently-asked question sheets and on the district website. So let's move on to Yanacaw School. The expansion at Yanacaw School includes six classrooms, a multipurpose room with a kitchen, additional toilet facilities, the relocation of the main office to the first floor, and a secure entrance. Those safety features have been identified over a period of years as a necessary requirement. These additions and the removal of the sixth grade also help us eliminate the trailers at Yanacaw School. At Washington School, the expansion also includes a three-story addition of six classrooms, toilet facilities, and an elevator, also allowing us to eliminate the trailers at Washington School. At Nutley High School, there's a critical need for additional physical education and multi-use space, as well as renovation of the media center and the TV studio space. The current media center would be renovated, creating four additional classrooms and common learning areas. You might be surprised to hear, but we have students at our own Nutley High School taking PE classes in the hallway. That's the level of overcrowding we're experiencing here at the high school and throughout the district. We have programming taking place in undersized rooms, in spaces not conducive to learning. We're using every available space, even though it's not initially designed as academic learning space. So much more than class size, it is this shrinking schoolhouse that's requiring us to seek solutions. Some people have said to us, "There are fewer students than when they were in school." That may be true, but I bet that if you were in school like I was, there was no classroom space needed for full-day kindergarten, for English language learning, for basic skills, special education, occupational therapy, physical therapy, speech. Space is the critical obstacle that we need to overcome. The board, previous administration, and this community have been studying this, preparing for what we know is coming. We've reached a point now where it's no longer coming. The students are here. Before I turn this over to our architects, I feel a need to say that if we don't do the proposed construction projects, if we continue to wait and see, the effect on the academic program and our educational reputation will, as someone so eloquently stated, cause your property taxes to go down a lot more than your taxes will go up. What we're asking for you to do is to invest in the future of this town, in the future of Nutley. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Joe DeCara from the DeCara Architects, DeCara and Rubino Architects. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Glazer. During the past few years, we've been working extensively with the Board of Education in developing options for the school district. The options that were prepared were to address the overcrowding conditions that Dr. Glazer identified, and we developed the various options and considerations. The basic direction that the district went after the studies were to move the sixth-grade population out of the existing elementary schools. We then took the sixth-grade classrooms that were identified in the demographic report into the existing middle school. At the John Walker Middle School, we looked at developing 20 classrooms, which would include 14 regular classrooms, three science rooms, and we looked at a variety of ways where we could develop the options and the additions. If you visualize the existing school, if you're looking from Franklin Ave, looking at the main entrance, we looked at various studies in adding on top of the building, off to the side, various small parking lots, and we even considered looking at building an addition along the front of the building to accommodate the 20 classrooms. During that time, in the studies that were evaluated, the town purchased the adjacent property off to the left side of the building known as the bicycle shop. This opened up tremendous opportunities and advantages where we could place, physically place, in an economical fashion, the 20 classrooms plus core facilities for the facility. So if you can visualize the front of the building, off to the left side with the additional property, we added a four-level addition. That addition accommodated, on the lower level, various classrooms that would meet the team planning organization for the true middle school. On the main level, which would be at the same area as the existing entryway, we created a new entranceway with a state-of-the-art security entrance that you would find in most new schools today. We would then rework the administration area to have that area conducive to access and direct visual connections from the administration to people entering and exiting the facility. On that main level, we then added a cafeteria, which would be needed for the additional population of the sixth grade moving into the middle school. This would be located adjacent to the existing cafeteria, and then the other areas that would be added would be the kitchen and the receiving area. If you also recall the site, you go from a lower level, from Franklin, as you move toward the rear of the building, you increase to another level, the second level, where the gym is in the rear. So what we've done on that level, we've created additional classrooms that would be a very concise, clean addition onto the existing middle school, and at that level in the rear, we added a new multipurpose-room gym for the sixth-grade population. This would be, again, adjacent to the existing gymnasium with a new entrance that you could actually use the facility for night use, for rec departments, without going through the remaining portion of the school. So, again, you have a very safe, secure layout. The upper level, again, would be classrooms that would follow the same design that would be on the lower tiers, the lower level, main level, and the top level. This would then accommodate the 20 classrooms that would be needed to accommodate the overcrowded conditions bringing the sixth grade over. There would be some slight interior alterations to accommodate the flow and the access of the building for student circulation, and the primary area of the school, the sixth grade, would be self-contained, but there are areas that the sixth graders would use the existing middle school, and the design is accommodating that. Over at Yanacaw, if you look at the facility, as Dr. Glazer mentioned, we're adding a multipurpose room and six classrooms. Along Yanacaw Place, if you look at the main elevation of the building, we're planning the additions on both sides. We're looking at placing the multimedia, the multipurpose room over to the left side, and the new entrance and six classrooms on a three-story addition to the right side. The existing paved play area that would be relocated to the right side, adjacent to the new addition, that's being relocated to accommodate the new multipurpose room. Again, a three-story addition with a new security entrance. We're moving and relocating the existing administration area down to that level where it's necessary for that main entrance with the six classrooms. We've also designed, in the future, and in the future I'm talking about, you know, 15, 20 years, that if there's ever a need to add on to this facility, we designed the addition with the corridor and the placement of the stairs that it could accommodate a second addition if needed in many, many years from now. That was one of the requirements. We wanted to make sure that in all the additions, we did not lock the district into something that they could not modify the building if needed. The old multipurpose room will be reconverted to both the music program and the art program. This is a small area that we're repurposing. Instead of building additional square footage, we're using that space as renovated space to accommodate the needed program requirements for the population of that facility. If we look at Washington, and we come in from the parking area to the left of that, whether that's the side or the rear, depending on how you're looking at the building, we would add a very compact, simple plan that we'd come off the existing corridor and add a three-story addition that would accommodate six classrooms. That addition would also accommodate an elevator to make the entire building ADA compliant, as well as adding toilets to accommodate staff and teachers for the added population. In all of the, both the Washington and Yanacaw, the various additions that are being planned would also eliminate the existing trailers or modular classrooms that currently exist at both facilities. We looked at Washington and various locations for additions. We looked at adding on top of the facility, because all your sites are very compact, they're tight, but based on the efficiency, the ultimate layout, and cost and ease of construction, we've placed a six-classroom addition in that location, which would accommodate the growth, the population, and a very concise method of construction. In all the buildings, we look at how to build while students are in place, and if you notice on the plans, they're very clean, concise, as well as compact in terms of the additions. At the high school, we looked at various areas in the building. One of the things was, as Dr. Glazer mentioned before, there's additional space required for the physical education program, as well as finding additional classroom space within the facility. So after numerous studies, evaluations, where we could add, again, we looked at building on top, on the side, we even looked at adding into the existing courtyard, which we quickly eliminated. We came up with a plan that's a combination of some renovation, interior renovation, and additions. The interior renovation would be to take the existing media center and TV studio and relocate that. In that area, we were able to achieve four full-size classrooms that could be used for various program requirements, STEM labs. We also added and developed a space around that as the new state-of-the-art makerspaces that would allow students to work in and out of various classrooms and then break out into different group sizes. And also, we had four additional small-group instruction spaces that could accommodate the program growth and facilitation of the high school. In order to make that space available, we then suggested to build a new media center and TV studio in the front of the building between the music wing and the gym, right in front of the auditorium. This would develop a new lobby area and a one-and-a-half-story-high multimedia center. On the left side of the existing locker rooms and auxiliary gym, we looked at adding various facilities for future use. But one of the things we wanted to do primarily was to look at and add additional physical education spaces that would be flexible enough to use for a variety of functions. So we kind of extended out on the rear corridor, flanking the existing girls' locker room with a corridor, and we placed two good-sized facilities that could be used for PE. We also wanted to develop that plan and the construction, that we added storage rooms that could be used in the future for stair towers if the district elected in the future to add on for additional classrooms. So the facility would be designed to add one and a second level on top of the existing addition for future expansion, if necessary. Those are the basic concepts that we're at at this particular time through the various years of studying this, and now I'd like to introduce Karen Yaman's, who would go over the cost impact to the community.
Thank you, Mr. DeCara. In 2012, the Board of Education and Administration decided that the district needed to take on a new direction. We could no longer look at just current needs, but we needed to plan for the future. That direction started with the development of the strategic plan. This plan has guided the academic and programming changes, communication, and the development of the district's annual budgets. One of the board's financial goals has been to look at the need for future capital projects while being mindful of the impact that these projects would have on the taxpayers. This board has been diligently building its capital reserve fund. The Board of Education is committing $2.4 million of those capital reserve funds to the projects that are being presented here. This investment will reduce the total amount of bonding that is needed for the projects. The project's total $66.5 million. The middle school project is estimated at $36.7 million, and again, that includes the 20 classrooms, cafeteria and service kitchen, the multipurpose room, toilet facilities, the secure entrance and reconfiguration of the main office wing, built-in fixtures, loose furniture, and every one of these quotes also includes the fees for the architect, engineer, survey, construction manager, permits, and there is a 10% set aside for contingencies. At Yanacaw School, the project is estimated at $15.6 million for the six-classroom addition, multipurpose room with a kitchen, toilet facilities, the relocation of the office and secure entrance, the removal of the trailers, and built-in fixtures. At Washington School, this project is $6.95 million: the three-story addition of six classrooms, toilet facilities, the elevator, removal of the trailers, built-in fixtures, and the loose furniture. And at Nutley High School, the project is estimated at $8.95 million, which includes the additional physical education multipurpose space, the renovation of the media center TV studio, producing four additional classrooms and common learning areas. A new media center will be developed to include the TV studio and the built-in fixtures. So with the district contributing $2.4 million to the project, we would have to bond for $66.5 million. So what does that mean to the taxpayers of Nutley? On the average assessed value, which is $316,427, the tax impact would be $183.50. That is because the Board of Education has the ability to split the bond sale into two sales. Since we do not need the entire $66 million upfront, we can decide to bond half of it and then the following year bond the other half, which would then add the additional $183.50 to that year's tax bill. We are working closely with our financial advisors, looking at the bond market, and as we get closer to the time for the sale, the Board of Education will be looking at whether that is the advantageous route to go for the taxpayers, or based upon the interest rates, whether that needs to be adjusted. The bonding will be done over, the repayment for the bond will be done over a 25-year period. We are assuming that we will be getting 10% debt service from the state. We will not know that definite number until after the state has reviewed the plans and gives us our final eligibility cost. We are hopeful that that will be much higher, which will then reduce the tax impact on the average homeowner. At this point, I'd like to turn everything back over to Dr. Glazer.
So I'm going to finish up today, telling you a little bit about our timeline for this project. At this point, we are still gathering community input, holding our town halls and community meetings. If there is anybody who would like us to come to their neighborhood group, their community organization, we would be happy to come and talk a little bit about what's happening with this proposed construction. Additionally, the Board of Education will be meeting in closed session on Additionally, the Board of Education will be meeting in closed session on February 13 to discuss the frequently-asked questions that have been gathered so far and the community input that we've received so far, either in our public forums or through the website. From that, the board will take everything, work with our architects, and refine the plans into something that's a final proposal and no longer a concept. This would be voted on February 27 at the regular Board of Education meeting, whether or not the board is going to want to go forward with a referendum. What that would mean is a vote from the community to support the bonding that business administrator Mrs. Yaman's shared with us. Following that February 27 vote, if it's voted to go forward with a referendum, the architects and the Board of Education, along with myself, the building principals, and an action committee of community members, would work to define plans that go down to the State Department of Education for approval. Once those are received and approved, that's when we find out the information on the debt service aid and whether or not we are able to go forward with a vote. The soonest we would be able to have a vote with the community would be September of 2017. There are also dates available in November and December, depending on the needs of the community and the timeline for the project. If all is equal, we would have shovels in the ground June of 2018 and students in their classrooms in September of 2020. That would also have the trailers are eliminated by that time and an opportunity for our middle school and high school programming to be in place. At this time, we would typically be entertaining questions and comments from the community. You'll find those scrolled from our frequently-asked questions at the end of this programming. Thank you for your attention and again, your engagement in this process. We really appreciate all of your input and feedback.